Good evening, welcome to the council meeting of May twenty first. Anyone in the audience who have a fine headphone, please raise your hand and we'll bring those to you. Seeing none, that's right, so we're going to break this. Let's leave it in the lab, United States of America. Into the recovery for which it stands. What I mentioned under God, if it is full, the rich and justice. Don't need to hold all things before.
Yes. Councilmember Blush.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mary Nesco.
Here.
Councilmember Sperrin.
Here.
Councilmember Thielmoren.
Here.
And Councilmember Satt.
Here.
Thank you, Donna. All right, council have any late changes to the agenda? See manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add item seven. Under presentations for election of deputy mayor, please, I failed to add that to our agenda tonight, I was planning on. Adding it to the June fourth agenda, but seeing as. Uh, councilmember Sherman will be out of town, I thought it'd be most appropriate to have a full council. For that process.
Right, council prepare. Yeah, all right. Council have any board reports to share?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a report from the Shelton City Parks District. Um, the Parks Advisor Board. Um, wanted to note three things, first of all, they advising us to raise our fee rentals for um, facilities. Especially the parks, um, because lighting would fail thirty dollars is maybe about an hour's worth of work, and that's about when um. People are making, so we're losing money as we're um, providing services, so they're, they're asking us to raise, we raise the next possible chance between debt. Even later before next year's fee, these um, fees are regularly looked at. So, uh, post case, they would like it, please. Um, secondly, um, Catalyst Park. Has gotten a grant, and that's the gardeners. And um, they're part of the police on the project, so they're gonna be expanding that operations Catalyst Park. And uh, having more programs and having more volunteers. Uh, thirdly, a little bit of bad news, the Kiwanis pancake breakfast might be fading away because of the. The large pancake maker is really hard to maintain. And um, it's costing too much to use and, and work the fundraising with. So um, if we could find a local community organization, like maybe the Rotary. Take over pancake baking, that would be cool, I think uh, one of our members Mike Hill was thinking about it as well. Because uh, somewhere on this, someone talked about. Um, and fourthly, while the Rotary's here tonight, talk about uh, one of the park successes with the public private partnerships, and I'm looking forward to hearing them tonight, so that's the more important from those.
Anyone else? All right, moving on, everyone have reviewed the item agenda?
Yes.
Come motion?
Move to for the consent agenda has published.
All right, we have a motion to second, or proof consent agenda is published, all of you say aye?
Aye.
Oh, just motion carries. Recent several presentations tonight, our first one is. Is swearing in a brand new councilmember, lengthy sap. You don't have to publish when you do.
So I'm going to swear, so we start. Plans this living United States, living citizen of the United States, living state of Washington, state of Washington. That I will support the constitution of the United States, I will support the constitution of the United States, and the constitution and laws of the state of Washington, the constitution and laws of the state of Washington. And build to the best of my judgment, build to the best of my judgment, scale and ability, scale and ability. In fully and partially, in fully and partially, perform the duties, perform the duties of Shelton City Council, city number six, Shelton City Council, city number six. And the city of Shelton, Washington, and the city of Shelton, Washington, has such duties, serve the spread by law, especially some spread by law.
Welcome, Lizzy.
Thank you very much.
That's my turn, swearing up a new police officer, again, and we'll call him up. I can't remember his name. I'm sorry, I am on the small. Ready for this? Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I take your name.
I look at all.
You solemnly swear, you solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Washington.
The constitution of the state of Washington.
And to abide by the city of Shelton Police Department.
To abide by the city of Shelton Police Department.
That I will faithfully and partially.
That I will faithfully and partially.
The charge duty of this officer, the city of Shelton.
The charge duty of this officer, the city of Shelton.
All right, welcome. Also, did they tell you you have the bridge room reference in the academy?
Uh, so city council, um. Officer Mullins here, I got to do his background, and one thing that was really outstanding was. He had uh, tested for a police officer position in Eastern Oregon, where it's much more competitive. And hundreds of applicants, and when I went to do his background, I talked to the police chief of a small agency out there. Who, believe it or not, remembered Mr. Mullins specifically among all these applicants, and the reason why is the police chief said. During testing, he would come out, and uh, he would like to observe everyone as everyone's nervous and trying to prepare themselves. But Mr. Mullins was the only one that was walking around, asking who needed help. And so, I'm really excited that Mr. Mullins has left Eastern Washington. I'm thankful for his family that supported them, because it's not just Mr. Mullins's decision, it's the entire family's decision. Came out here, um, reestablished himself here in, in Shelton, and I think we have a fine officer for, for our community here, so. Thank you.
Welcome. Our next presentation is returning to present French and being gardener.
Good evening, councilmember, for inviting us to speak this evening, um, we understand you have a hard copy packet in um, for your reference. That takes you through a presentation that will include. Uh, this will focus on a partnership between the Shelton Rotary Club, using the city of Shelton's adopted park program. And uh, other local partnerships to do a focused target over the past year at the city of Hupman Hook Trail. For those who are not familiar, we provided a brief background in one of the audience who might be interested. On page two of our handouts, um, we would like to point out, the Hupman Hook Trail system. Is located immediately across Shelton Springs Road, from the Shelton High School. And the track facility, um, and there you will find a beautiful, um, beautiful trail, one point eight miles in length. Um, serpentine through uh, some vegetated forest lands, uh, well-maintained bark trail, uh, chips friendly for running or walking. Um, and at the trail end is a student memorial. And the student memorial recognizes and um, ensures that the memory of Shelton students who passed, retired to reach graduation. Uh, will remain honored and, you know. Um, so we provided a bit of history on slide two, to just say how the trail came into being. So um, it was back in the nineteen seventies, uh, through many local um, joint efforts that we, uh, the Hupman Hook was built. And from that time forward, it's really been a fundamental part of a lot of our community members. Um, from, from athletes, you know, to elderly, to folks with young children, people walking pets, it's just a great resource. And uh, we realized in um, twenty two. That things were not looking good enough for. And we became more and more concerned, and we started to reach out to folks who have used the trail many more than thirty years. And we were really concerned about the direction it's going, um, so what we did on page, slide four, uh, we kind of outlined what we saw. And so it's titled background twenty twenty two through spring twenty three, issues of concern. We were seeing damage to improvements, damage to the vegetation, daily graffiti, and daily dumping of really excessive trash. Um, behavior by a very few deterring news finding. And so, the behavior of just a few folks was turning folks away from using the city. And the more that was allowed to happen, the fewer users, um, of the trail we've seen. Um, we confirmed that bit, um, bivers of the community, and we decided at the Shelton Rotary Club. That this was a charity project that we were willing and interested in standing behind, and making it our target focus on. Spring of last year, which they don't. Um, that included formally adopting through the city's program, and included partnering, um, with the city Shelton, fine, um, city law enforcement. Uh, the school district, uh, different partners in the community, and we strategized on, on things we could do. And I thought it'd be helpful to see some of your photos, so in your slides at five through eleven, you can flip through. Um, we were seeing people just daily throwing trash and clothing, um, in the trees and bushes. And then funny benches were associated with their people. We had a, a bird flocking that was targeted for a weekly basis, intentionally targeted fires. Um, you know, you see the, the unfortunately, the. The condition is just not what we would want to represent as, as a key force of our community gathering, and then right across the women's parks. I think especially concerning on pages, you know, um, like before photos seven and eight. You can just see people with literally just throw trash, who's doing memorial, graffiti and trash. And it was really upsetting, you know. So, here we are a year later. Following the adoption, a lot of hard work by a lot of really, um, you know, excited people, we have the after photos, um, that you can page through. So on slides, um, twelve and thirteen, you will see some very current photos of that same student memorial area. And the exciting thing is, we can record this. Um, our pick trash pickup days, we started out and it was um, exceeding ten full bag of trash that we would bug out on. And that is not the case anymore, we joke that we're lucky to even fill half of the trash bag. We have community members coming up and thanking us and joining in, so it's revived and we need the spirit up there. Um, we did a, on slide fourteen, you have a timeline summary, that just kind of takes you through what I've talked about, but it talks about the period twenty two, the spring of twenty three. Our, we held a kickoff event back in April of twenty twenty three. Where we invited all of the community members to kind of rally there, um, those who have used the trail, get introduced to the trail. And figure out, you know, what we did in terms of. Um, so that's been a year in progress, and the Rotary, Shelton Rotary Club just renewed its adopted park status. So that we had to sign on for another entire year of going up and doing these work sessions and, and user support. So, here we are in May, um, and one of the things I'm excited to turn on for today to talk about. Is uh, the current focus on the student memorial. That memorial has not been updated since two thousand and fourteen, and um, we've got some exciting things to share, so.
Hi, good evening, council, appreciate the opportunity to be here. Um, so I have had the true honor to uh, have two opportunities to work on this uh, particular memorial and uh, above trail. Um, just wanted to like it through a few of the details about, um, work we've been doing over the last year, just some of the work that uh, did initially on the project. Kind of where we're at, where we're looking to go forward. Um, so this here, uh, slide fifteen, so the past year, we have uh, been asking the community to uh, provide us with names, you know. Uh, social media can be used for a lot of negative things, but there are some, some great things it could be used for, so. Initially, back in the mid nineties, when I started this project, uh, when I was researching names, it was more of a. Uh, check out some yearbooks, word of mouth, uh, articles in the paper, you know, those kinds of things, and we did our best together, spend names as possible. Um, and we utilize social media this time around, for the last year or so, we've been able to gather twenty four names to add to the memorial. Um, you'll probably notice that about ten of those names were dismissed initially. Um, and actually, a couple of those, um, are. Individuals that, that family members were initially against their names being included. Um, that's one of the things that we wanted to prioritize for this particular uh, memorial was to make sure that it was a positive experience. Uh, for the loved ones that were still in the community, and so if they requested that a name didn't be included, we wanted to honor and respect that wish. Um, so pretty cool that we were able to add some, some names this time around, those families who are. Um, on board and super thankful. Um, I will like to, I, I'd like to share, um, a few of the interactions I've had with family members, um. Which uh, I think makes all this work worthwhile, I've had several others, several family members. Uh, communicates me that they're super appreciative of the city, and the Rotary. And uh, all of the organizations coming together to do this project, because they thought their children's names, uh, would be forgotten forever. Um, so they're super thankful, uh, for the opportunity to uh, to see their children's names memorialized. So as you can see, we've got twenty four new names, um, because of that, um, there isn't enough room on the current standard memorial. So we've come up with some, uh, with some solutions looking forward. Um, as you can see, we have a rendering up here of, of what it will look like. Uh, we'll actually have this uh, rendering, uh, we're gonna have a gathering at the, um, pop-up and the park itself next Friday. Uh, community is, uh, is welcome to join us, we can run it up to six. Uh, we'll be out there to answer questions, to walk, jog. And uh, people can take a look to see what it's gonna look like, ask questions, provide feedback. Um, and we're really looking forward to that, and. Um, if you move to page seventeen, that uh, really kind of encapsulates where we're at, kind of financially. And uh, the scope of the product, they're gone, and I'll tell you, it's, it's essentially getting out, you know, beautiful product over again to myself. And having the opportunity to do the first time, we're, um, you have a vast board of twenty five years, uh, tribute is a honor. Um, definitely a little bit of work ahead of us, um, Christagel, we've got twenty nine thousand dollars, a little over twenty nine thousand dollars. Um, our, our solution for, um, to, to pass more names, is we purchased a couple granite benches. Uh, there's three benches up there currently, as you can see on the render share. The uh, two benches that are closest to the road, closest to the high school, Shelton Springs. Those will, those will be replaced with granite benches, um, so the names will be engraved at the back of those benches. Um, there'll be room for additional names as we, as we move forward. Um, and if and when those get built up, there's a third bench that could be replaced as well. Um, there was also some concern brought up by the community that, you know, at the time, there was just two schools. Um, there's been schools that have been added to the community, uh, so it's not just Shelton High School and Shelton Middle School. So, in thinking of that, trying to be proactive, um, the benches themselves will not be school specific. So we Shelton remembers, it would be the same verbage that's on the stand up one. Um, so, currently, we uh, we're working, uh, Rotary Club and, and I are working on some fundraising, fundraising efforts. They've already pledged, uh, some money in the Shelton market, but somebody. Uh, Williams Act Architecture put forth some efforts, um, free of charge as well. Uh, we're gonna do uh, GoFundMe, uh, to raise some funds. Uh, also gonna do some old school door knocking, uh, you know, face to face, uh, make some requests. Uh, it's a little bit of the larger reprising, we probably thought about as we, uh, uh, had to embark upon, uh, this rededication. Like I said, I think every kind of was worth it, uh, the effort that's been put in, uh, gratitude from the families. Um, and to really continue to highlight this, uh, like prominent area of our community, I think is super important. So, um, uh, turn back to the slides, you can see eighteen through twenty one, kind of uh, action photos. So we had all the, all the great efforts that have been put forth up at the bottom of the pop-up. Uh, a lot of folks have been putting in time to, uh, take things out, maintain the, the, the area. Um, and uh, it's just been, it's been a joy to be a part of it. So, um, uh, with that, uh, if there are any questions or, or concerns or clarification. I'm curious about, I can ask me the question.
Okay, any question you have on? Is it your original legal project from your staff?
It was, yes, yep. Yeah, it was a year ago.
Wonderful, you guys have done a wonderful job out there, we'd much appreciate it, it's amazing when we have community members. But groups, nonprofit groups that come out and, and, you know, take it upon themselves to be, be, be sheltering, I, I think it's absolutely wonderful. Um, you know, scholarships and, and doctorates and, and all the fundraising that we do here, and we got a movie to, I absolutely appreciate it. Thank you very much. Right. Thank you.
If anybody wants to make a donation today. We, uh, we will.
Do you have a copy down for that, that much?
Awesome. I'll stay there. Thank you very much.
Next presentation is Elcat for the Great Barb.
This is for our first quarter of twenty twenty four. Um, so we have, we had a pretty good first quarter, we're looking at about six hundred and seventy visitors, contacts. For international. Um, and that's, you know, tends to be, that's. Very complex. Next slide. As you can see, um, it's very slowly decreasing, so I haven't done that, but. So, very happy with that. So, Facebook, we continue to have. Pretty good response. Now, see, I criticize, and I still can't read it, please. But, um. No, we're looking at, we're reaching about ten thousand. Some, so this, you know, I don't think it will speak for, it's great. We have our Google Analytics, um, as you can see on the first. On the left-hand side of there, we had some little bot thing which kind of messed up all of our. All our grounders, so I also added what we have directly on our website, and you can see it's a lot more deeply distributed. And um, we had about, over a thousand unique visits. And about two thousand. Or two thousand pages on our website. Next one, we are currently finishing up, um, installing our. Uh, horse dust polluted, which. Is fun, um, but I hadn't realized since we have. And since it counts, and obviously, people do that already, but. And, I mean, today, she's terrified, I'm considering because of the climate, but, um. So that's going on now, and. Oh, one thing I wanted to add to is this, uh, a couple years ago, we had. A couple from Australia, and they were so happy because we were visitor information and we opened. They had gone multiple places, and every place was close, so, so that's fine. So, is there anything, any questions, comments?
Any questions? Thank you. Moving on, we have Elcat for the Great.
Good evening, councillors, Shelton folks. Um, before I started, I, I made this post, or I made this slide back on May eighth, at Danielle's request. Not really knowing what I was gonna put in it, but this picture really struck me, because it was these kids, obviously gathering Christmas trees for our maze. And um, they obviously are having a really good time, trying to compare this chain sauce. But what I wanted, I didn't really realize how fortunate this was, because these same children. I would like to point out, have been working all week on your train. And they received absolutely no financial contribution, uh, these kids got nothing for doing in Christmas phase, they took off the Christmas phase for us this year. And they are just students in our area, so anytime anybody says that kids these days, I want you to realize. That that little guy in the back there was crawling inside the, um, pipes and stuff, and getting to the places where us old crooked. People couldn't get to, so I, I really hope you realize that we have some wonderful kids in our community, and they obviously helped us with Christmas Town. And I hope everybody enjoys the train that they did, I had nothing to do with it, so, there you go, anyway, having said that. So, I wanted Christmas Town to happen such a long time ago, um, this is our fourth year, the first year was the Christmas maze that we put on. Where we want to get a world record for most Christmas trees in the world, which is awesome, we have a good school record, if anybody looks up Shelton, we do have that. Amazing station. Um, and since then, we have been, uh, shamed into hosting events every year. And last year, uh, the, again, like these kids that are in the picture, uh, they all. Hosted, they came and did the Christmas maze, because it was a lot of work every year, and we were like, this is a lot of work. And so all those children came forward, and then just people from the public came forth and did it, and again, nobody got paid, they just did it because they just love having Christmas things. Uh, below that, you will see a whole list of companies, local companies. That have sponsored Christmas Town, all together, along with, uh, the twelve thousand that the city of Shelton contributed, lodging packs. We raised over sixty thousand dollars for Christmas Town. And with that money, we were able to put every dollar back into the event, where we had three events, we had. Um, we were able to do some major advertising for Mason County, which, and for Shelton, which we've never done before, using K five TV advertising. Uh, mostly, Litch Free came in and twenty thousand dollars, which was amazing, so I really want you to realize that we have some amazing supporters for our Christmas spirit in Shelton. And it's not just a matter of, uh, they use, you mentioned the revive, reignite spirit. Uh, really shows that at Christmas, and I really, and again, the train, just the spirit of the community, it is really amazing, it's really awesome to give people the opportunity to bring forth that spirit and be their best person. Next slide. So I'm just gonna go really quick through everything, uh, lots of advertising, we had a, um, we had events all over Mason County, I tried to spread it out, so it wasn't just Shelton. Shelton was the hub of Christmas Town, but I tried to bring in all the events that were happening in Belfair. Uh, we, we started an event in Quitsport, where it used to be a really cold Christmas, but we brought that back, so we started doing stuff out there. We also tried to make it so that there were things happening all week. Because part of what lodging tax is, is you're trying to put heads to beds on days when some of the hotels or the lodging may not have people staying. And the nice thing about Christmas is it works pretty much every day of the week, because people take time off. The Shelton Journal was a huge supporter of this, and we want to say thank you to them. As was King Five, they went beyond, they did some DVD magazine presentations. And then Warmon of six point nine, which is our Christmas station, which I tune into every year, um, they really did a great job, and then KMS was a partner, so we did a lot of fun things with radio, doing radio programs. And again, um, really, again, the sponsors, the tree sponsors, we had trees around town, and a lot of people contributed, just even the twenty five dollars, the fifty dollars for that. And that, all the funds from that went straight to the downtown merchants, so they could do some of the events there, doing downtown. Next slide. And I got a lot of slides, I'm gonna try to go away. Um, website, we had a lot of posts, a lot of events, this is just to kind of exemplify all the different things that were going on, like I mentioned, we had Christmas Carol, which we posted here at the Civic Center. We thought maybe ten people would show up, we were kind of panicking, because we had these slots where people were supposed to do radios, and we had follies, I learned so much about radio. And we had forty eight people show up for nine different voices, and so we shared it, and we did it a couple times, and it was really, really fun, really cool community effort. The next slide we've done. Uh, as you, as you probably noticed, there was Christmas trees around town, a lot of people had fun with that, I'm amazed how many people stole them, but they obviously needed Christmas trees. Uh, we had a fellow out in Montesano who donated, like, a lot of the trees, and then I paid for some as well, just to make the maze. Like, a lot of the trees, and then I paid for some as well, just to make the maze more full, because people sometimes complain they're using Charlie round trees for the maze. And, um, so he donated quite a few, and his connection was, his kids used to come to, come here when they were, like, they came here to family the Christmas town when they were younger. And it was, they remember the first Santa Claus. I don't know, just kind of neat, because he put aside, um, two hundred Christmas trees for us. Which we were then able to raise money for the Shelton Downtown Merchants with. Next slide, and make the downtown look pretty. And then, again, this is the tree maze. We had a lot of people show up for that. It was, those are the trees that came on the big trucks. We had tree trucks go out. Take them up, and then it was kind of funny, because before we had to put thirty trees in the road to make it look okay, we put four in right though. Okay, it's a forest. So a lot harder to put lights on them though, because there's a lot of crashes. Next slide. And then again, uh, we had fundraisers pretty much every night. We started that last year, and it was really good because a lot of schools were able to fundraise. Raise little monies, get there, tell everybody what we do. But what was really nice is people who showed up with the maze on a weeknight. They would have hot chocolate and fires and, and just had a wonderful time. And, um, and again, it's thank you for having us. You two parking line, it was so beautiful. That's why we had the propane ones. We didn't want to put any, um, sparks or anything on the concrete. The next slide. Gingerbread Challenge again. This was the fourth year. We had some amazing entry. These are a few of them. Again, we had donations for prizes of Dr. Bowers and a couple other people, so we gave about a couple thousand dollars in prizes, so kids might always have really good checks. Next slide please. And then we have lots of crafts and Santa Claus and different events at the Civic Center, which was really fun for everybody. Everything was free. And then what wasn't free, it was donated back to the different organizations that were supporting it. Next slide. And this is the website stats during the season of Christmas Town, and this is specific just to the Christmas Town website, so it's christmastownwa.org. And we had thirty seven visits, thirty seven thousand visitors in that period of Christmas Town. And which was a twenty-three percent increase from the previous year. And next slide. And then as far as our website, our Facebook reach, I did do, so the top web Facebook is the Christmastown Wa one. And then I also started the second Facebook, which was called the Festival of the First, because I was trying to bring the whole community into it. So you can see it had a hundred percent increase, so that was its first year, but seventy-two thousand people visited that. And that was kind of exciting. And next slide. And then just to hit the numbers, because this is all about lodging tax. Uh, Mason County is at the top there. That is what I also host the Contract Mason County Tourism. So I have to track this very carefully to make sure the numbers are going in the right direction. Um, if you look at the, that's the bigger piece right there. But it's lodging tax numbers are usually two months ahead, so if it's money that comes in in December from lodging. It is kind of reported in February, March, sometimes a little earlier, depending on what the lodging facility is. Airbnb is going a little earlier. But private hotels and stuff going a little later. So Shelton is generally a little bit later because there's more private hotels here. And I hope you can see from the numbers and from your packets, this is included as well. The numbers are going up, and that is wonderful, because the whole point of spending lodging tax is to get shoulder season. And to try bringing people to our community, not in the summer months when everybody's already here, but try to help all those businesses that would like to have. You know, help the shops out during the winter, and I'm sure the shopkeepers will attest to the fact that having people come to Shelton at Christmas. So, thank you very much. That's the end of my presentation.
Bringing back Christmas Town has been absolutely wonderful. Started, I believe, with the first tree maze and the homework, um, record-breaking. Maybe, I guess, and thank you for that, and thank you for the continued support of Christmas Town. And just get back to the training, and absolutely thank you for the Hanson's and the Wilson Dickerson families for, for their hard work on that train. I spent four days down there, about four hours a day, and I'll tell you, that, that was hard work. We sprayed, we sanded, we painted, and then sometimes we sprayed and sanded again. The same spot that we sanded a few days ago, because we wanted, they wanted it to look really nice. And I absolutely appreciate those kids. I want to tell you about those kids, the Dickerson kids. They are just.
Yeah, amazing.
Wonderful, wonderful kids, nice kids, hardworking, and she's not kidding. They were crawling through underneath that train and spots that you couldn't get your hand into. I don't know how they did it, but they were covered from head to toe with paint every Christmas day that I was there. I mean, head to toe with.
So all are, right? Uh, yeah, I know, I'm, I'm not, not too south, but I really think that when we as a community come together to do these small things. Um, I noticed that somebody is restoring the, the total pole in Post Office Park, and I'm sure a lot of you realize that. The Post Office Park is heading to, and Wayne Wilson and his, his grandchildren have convinced me to help them lead a charge to try to save Post Office Park. Which I said, no, no, I'm not gonna get home, it's not gonna happen. But honestly, um, it's really important for us as a community to realize that if we all worked better, it spreads the. It spreads the load, and it is not the city's responsibility to be the one that does everything. It's not the county's. It's, it's our responsibility to support the city and to support our community.
Rachel, I want, want, one mention that Zach Hanson, Rachel's son, was the leader of train, um, restoration. And, uh, he is, well, he made his work.
I did want to say that I don't know how many people have come in and said to me that Shelton felt more like a Hallmark movie than any place they've ever been. So I have a feeling you guys fall out too.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, moving on, our last presentation, next, we have the last, next. Our finance director Mike Givens, I'm not sure he'll get claps, but, uh. We'll, we'll see how it goes.
All right. Fair enough. Thank you, Mayor and members of council. Um, this is the financial report for March. Of twenty twenty-four, and just as a reminder, we've been doing this now at the council meeting with me reporting for a little over a year. Because I know, um, city manager Seakler and I both feel this is important information. And I thank you for the opportunity to really highlight this for you and the community. I'm gonna start out on page one. March is a nice place to look at our finances, because it's a twenty-five percent portion of the fiscal year. Kind of breaks a little bit evenly in that way. Not that all of the revenues certainly come in evenly, nor do the expenditures happen that way. But in math terms, it's a little bit easier to break it up in that quarter and then half. Kind of look at things, in particular, as we're preparing for the twenty twenty-five budget. We really look carefully at that, um, mid-year projection so that we can see where we're going to end up. As a reminder, what happens in our funds really, um. Kind of guides us towards development for the next year. So on this page, we've summarized the revenue and expenditures in our general fund, tend to focus a little bit more on that, since that's. Driven by a lot of factors of revenue and expenses that support the general government functions of the City of Shelton. We are estimating right now that we'll end, have an ending fund balance of just over five and a half million. So when we subtract the reserve amount of that, it, we're estimating right now that it, um, will have just over two point four million dollars of unreserved amount. We're working, um, as a city, well, in, right now, the city manager and I are looking at this carefully. So that we can work as a city leadership team to make some recommendations to you all, and through the budget process. On what happens with that amount. Of course, it's your decision as council with the budget. But as we are able to get a handle on what the revenue projections look like for twenty twenty-five, I just wanted to spend a couple of minutes on this. So that you know it's not just sitting there unnoticed. Um, we're watching it and looking at what's happening. As you know, a year ago, we brought to you, or just about a year ago, we brought a difficult mid-year budget that reduced some expenditures. In particular, the general fund. And so it's, um, important, I think, to highlight where we're at with that. So that's, um, where we're estimating right now with what we know right now, which is pretty good information, I think. I'm gonna go forward here to page two to highlight some of the revenue. So at March. What we know is we have had revenue come in at a certain rate for twenty-five percent of the fiscal year. But I'm sitting here on May twenty-first, and I know a little bit more, because we've received the first half property tax payments. Those came in at fifty-two percent of budget, which is right about where we would expect. So we're able, when we're present, preparing this report, which what we completed about two weeks ago for the packet. Um, we're able to estimate that we're pretty certain we'll receive all of our property tax budget as we're showing there. And if you just look at the general fund revenue sources, right now, we're pretty optimistic that we'll be right at about where we're budgeted. Um, slightly above, because we're receiving some unanticipated revenue, um, that came in, in the way of grants and other kinds of. Um, allotments that we didn't know about. Will likely bring you a second supplemental budget, but at, at this point, I think that's a, a really positive place to be. That we're estimating that we'll collect just about right where we estimated the budget to be. So not just trying to pat finance on the back with that, that we estimated well in budget, but that it's really coming true and that. I think that's a good sign for our economic situation as it is right now, that there's no sign that there's any, um, problems. If you remember last year, for those of you that were here, we had a very down month in sales tax, and that hasn't happened this year. It's been very comparable to what we've seen in past years. So from a revenue, um, standpoint, things are looking really solid. Um, at the, um, expenditure side of things, so I'm on the next page. If I can get it to, um, go to the next page, I'll be there. There we go. Everything, you know, at the bottom line, we're also looking like we'll spend most of the general fund. Some departments, this is the breakdown of the general fund by department. Some are slightly under budget, some are slightly over. And so it's a busy year. It means that everybody's really productive and things are happening, but we're also not, um, looking at. Big savings in the, in the cost center. So, um, from that perspective. With what we know right now, as we prepare the March financial statement, we're estimating that we'll pretty much fully spend. Um, the general fund budget within about a percent. So that's a pretty, um, narrow margin. And I, I highlight this for you, because as we plan for the twenty twenty-five budget, that, that makes our task. Um, pretty formidable, because we don't, as you know, have much revenue increase, and we're already spending on our different programs and projects. That happen out of the general fund at a pretty high level.
Oh, are we seeing a benefit with the inclusion B and O tax so far?
Um, we're, we're seeing some additional revenue, certainly. Yes, it's coming in, um, as you notice on our revenue pro- projection here. We're projecting slightly under, because I didn't know quite where it would come in. But we're certainly, um, we were able to increase that budget line for this year. And so it will certainly, um, I would say be close to fully realized. And as we look towards the twenty twenty-five budget right now, I'm estimating not a very. Much, much of a larger increase, because I think we've pretty much realized that. But we'll see a little bit where it comes in as those annual, um, filers pay, because that's the part where. It's difficult to know how much, you know, business happened in the course of the year where people would pay that tax annually. But it certainly, um, was an increase to our budget there. So that's, um, the review by department. Um, on pages four and five of the report, um, we have the general fund year-to-year comparison and then month-to-month. So where it has been over the course of years, um, and we go back to, um, fiscal year twenty twenty-two. And then again, by March, so where it was in March of twenty-two through twenty twenty-four. And now that we're past that, um, difficult year of twenty twenty, I think it draws us to some. Um, good comparisons. I certainly use this as a tool to look at where our revenue's landing. Um, you know, and as a, uh, just an example, um. Mr. Mayor, you asked about B and O tax. You can see through March, it's, you know, not as much as twenty twenty-two, but certainly a little bit more than twenty twenty-three. So that'll just be an area we continue to watch, and as that tax fully becomes implemented, um, I'll just share with you anecdotally. It, it's taken some of our payers a little bit of time to get used to it. We, we're having to do some work in contacting businesses. To get the right rate remitted, so I think I want to give it a little bit more time to really see that that revenue kind of settles in at that new tax rate. So that's our comparisons on the general fund. This page then shows the breakdown of sales tax, um, through March. Sales tax breakdown by type. Um, I know that's of interest to some folks, because you can really see that our sales tax in the City of Shelton is pretty static on what we collect on. And it doesn't change greatly over the course of, um, months. A couple of percents maybe will vary between retail and professional services, and then construction, depending on what's happening. I would guess we'll see that change a little bit as we look at April, um, simply because the city's been engaged in some pretty large construction projects over April and May. So we'll take a look at that. Um, and moving along, because I know we're, um, we have a lot going on this evening, um, on page seven, this is. A page that has a lot of information. At the top part, we're estimating, um, fund balances. This is obviously something I think I draw your attention to pretty frequently across all of our city funds from the general fund. Um, throughout everything to estimate where we think we'll end the year. This is what we know with the expenses and revenues. We've realized as of March, everything's estimated to end in a positive way. In other words, a positive fund balance, which is what we want to see, um, with all of the different projects and, um. Happening throughout the city and the different funds. So, um, we knew that we were drawing some of them down. As we complete some of the projects, and that's shown by the dollar and percent change over on those right-hand columns. And then at the bottom of page seven is our tracking of citywide FTE, and I think it's. Of course, we filled some positions as of May twenty-first, but where we stood at March thirty-first, the end of March. Were, um, nine and a half total city vacancies. And so in, in some instances that, of course, create some budget savings, because we're not paying a salary. But in other departments, we're having to pay overtime to cover that, and, uh, and certainly if there's not overtime, there's other city staff. Doing the job, because the work typically is not going away, because we're already a pretty lean city. So I track that so that you can have an idea of kind of where we stand and, um, where we're at with those.
We're using contractors for like, for buildings and stuff? Are we using labor dollars at what's short, what we're short in employees? Or do we have another budget?
No, essentially, if it's, if it's, if it's building official services, then it'd be, it's, it'd be under different line items. So it'd be professional services, contract services within the community development bu- budget. But you'd see a savings in the regular pay line item, so it's just being trans, you know, it's being expended from one line item and not being expended from the other. So in the bottom line budget for community economic development, you'll see that difference.
And then on pages eight through the rest of the report, we kind of roll it up and take you through each fund revenues and expenditures. And round out the report on the city finances through the month of March. So, um, each month, we work to close the month, balance everything out, and then present this to you. Um, I can tell you that Deputy Finance Director Schnitzer and I worked, um, hard on the annual financial report. That's been submitted to the state auditor's office. That's due, um, by this year, May twenty-ninth. And we expect, um, to have an audit by the state auditor of two fiscal years, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three sometime this year. So that's, um, the end of my financial report for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, absolutely wonderful report, and I think a lot of this has to do with you and your staff, of course, the city manager, uh, doing their job as well. That's why I think we're so close in our funds. It's, you, you saw something happening about a year and a half ago, and you put the brakes on. You did a new budget for twenty-four and took that into account, and I, I. I I think you just done a great job, but I think it's got a lot to do with you and your staff.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? All right. Thank you. All right. Okay, we are at our last presentation. We're gonna call the presentation, but it's a collection of deputy mayor. And um it's done in all our city clerk will explain the process and I will call for nominations after that.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as city clerk makes the way to the podium, as you know, our the city council protocol manual stipulates that a mayor and deputy mayor will be elected from the body uh of the council. Um, we have a city mayor, uh councils, de- deputy mayor Schmidt resigned in April of this year, opening that seat. We have a full council tonight, finally, with the um appointment of council member Sapp. And with the absence of council member Sherman at the next meeting, I thought it was appropriate that uh we move through the process of appointing a deputy mayor uh tonight. So that process is very similar um to what you've seen before when we open the floor for nominations. They don't need a second, I'll close the nominations and then um mayor will oh, excuse me, the clerk will take that.
We'll call them, right?
Whatever you want me to do. In there so you can open the floor for nominations.
Are open.
And now council member Sherman for deputy mayor.
Uh nominate council member Gutierrez for deputy mayor.
I have the ready nominations. Maybe motion that opposed nominations. Yeah, I like motion to close nominations.
Much of the closed nominations.
So the second to close nomination, all of them say aye.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, who was the second? I was writing. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The board's closed. All right.
So our nominated council members are Sharon Sherman and Miguel Gutierrez. And we'll start with Lindsay.
Sharon, Sharon.
Thank you.
Uh, Miguel.
Thank you.
Sharon.
Mr. Mayor.
Sharon.
Well, you're gonna, you're not gonna vote. Now you're gonna go over here?
Yep.
Good. Sharon, thank you.
Myself. And that's that's all.
You are now. Other word for the gay married details.
Evening, Mayor Deputy Mayor, uh Jay Harris, Republic Works Director. So the six-year transportation improvement plan, I got some great stuff tonight, okay? I sort of consumed the backside of the agenda here, so I'll go quickly though. Um, so the purpose of the six-year transportation improvement plan is to look six years into the future. Um, in the packet, you'll find a spreadsheet. I'm required to s- uh report um our transportation projects. These are the larger projects in the city um to the state every year without, within thirty days of council adopting. We, the acronym is T I P, the six-year T I P. So um, the tip is good for us because it allows us to really look into what the transportation needs are. And in a moment, I'll go over some of the projects. And um it also allows us to secure funding, um whether it's through the county, the county's one of our partners. Um, going through the state, um we submit some grant requests to the state. Um, we usually have some matching funds that we use to transportation benefit district dollars um as matching funds. Um, so the goal is to get this uh approved through you guys uh at at the next meeting. Uh, some of the projects uh in the tip, and this is in your packet, is uh we're working on the intersection improvement of Walls Neeland and Springs. Uh, we have a a a grant from the state um to to look at uh the intersection improvements there. Um, roundabout there, about five million bucks. Improving the signal, adding some additional turning movements and that sort of thing, maybe about a million and a half. So um more to come on that. We're gonna be bringing that project to you folks. Um, we're we're having s- uh studies done and that sort of thing on it. Um, we actually secured some additional funding um recently um from the state. Um, another million dollars just for the corridor improvements, which the intersection, we can apply maybe a little bit of that money there. So we'll be coming to you in a study session about that project to talk a little more. Um, the next one, I'm just going on partway down the list here, Olympic Highway North. Uh, we secured a three-point-eight million-dollar grant um from uh the uh that Transportation Improvement Board, T I E, um for that project, that's for pavement restoration. Um, we're gonna get in there, do that, that's on the tip. Um, and then uh we have uh the systemic safety pedestrian improvements. Um, that's a rapid flashing beacon at Olympic Highway North and Ice Street. That's gonna go in as part of the Olympic Highway North uh pavement restoration project. Um, up at uh uh Bellevue Avenue, Olympic Highway South, South, uh, what is that? The Urban Outfitters, Olympic Outfitters?
Shelton Outfitters.
Shelton Outfitters, close, I got them all right. So um Shelton Outfitters, there's some problems with pedestrians. They're getting across the road at the signal and that sort of thing, some sidewalk improvements. Um, and then uh i- in a little bit, I'll be talking about the transportation comp plan, that's also in the tip. Um, that's updating an an older two thousand seventeen plan. This is where we uh go in and uh look at trip rates at existing intersections and then forecast them twenty years out and then identify future improvements. Great project, uh some railroad uh track removal, that would be down there at SR three, there's some tracks still there at Seventh and then up all the way to Holbert. So we got a project coming up for that, you guys will be seeing soon. Um, the regional trails are on here too. Um, that's the old Simpson Rail uh line from Neeland all the way up to one oh one, it's a large corridor there. Um, that's, it needs to be on our our tip list. Also, there's another project to take a trail from Neeland, SR three, all the way out uh to the yacht club. So uh these are all in the planning stage, but I need to add them onto the tip. If we try to secure funding and they're not on here, we got a problem. I I can't get funding, additional funding if they're not here. Critical pedestrian route map, uh something really important we're gonna be working on. And then uh two developer projects, one is Satsup Avenue, um and it goes down to Deegan Road. Um, that's in the city limits, uh Coffee Creek Development will be building that. And I need to get that, it's a major collector they're putting in and they'll be constructing a lot of those improvements. And it's possible they're eligible for traffic impact fee reimbursements, so I needed that on here. And then uh with Olympic Heights, uh Alpine Way roadway improvements or Peacock Lane, uh whichever. I, we don't quite know what the road name is yet there, but uh that's also a collector road, um that's shown on the tip. And um I'm available for any questions.
Mr. Mayor, please replace resolution number one three two nine, DAP zero four two four, on the action agenda for the June fourth council meeting for further consideration.
All right, comments or questions? Well, it would not be an accusation discussion if I didn't mention my little day junior high problem up there by the school where there's sorely the traffic. Kids are always dodging cars over there. One car will stop, each direction means we'll say, and then the other two cars, each direction don't stop. And uh, it wouldn't be normal if I didn't bring that up. Safe routes or construction. Also, um, the new Mount New School, I'm not sure why that school did not put any uh crosswalk in front of the brand new school when they built that. But that's still the concern. Uh, I live down there, people, kids are crossing every day with the crosswalk. Probably a crosswalk there, but that's my shit.
Thanks for um prioritizing this list and giving us a roadmap.
Good, make sure roadmap.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, well, we had motion to set the place resolution number one three two nine, DAP zero four two four of the action agenda for June fourth, twenty twenty-four for further consideration. All in favor, say aye. Aye, closed. This public hearing is closed.
Great.
After regular meeting. Right, we have another another item to J. S C J Alliance.
Yes, uh, so council, um, I mentioned this was one of the items on the tip. So um currently, the city is working with S C J Alliance and the global comprehensive plan for the city. We're doing it jointly with the uh the county. That was a presentation um that Director Hill had brought uh you folks a couple of months ago. Um, it was, that's underway. So when the comprehensive plan is land use maps, land use types, housing needs, capital facilities, utilities. That's water, sewer, storm, transportation is part of the comp plan, economic development, parks and recreations. And then goals uh for the plan to achieve a twenty-year vision. The comp plan's updated every ten years, but it's a twenty-year look. Well, transportation's part of that. And so we budgeted last year a hundred thousand dollars to hire a consultant to really look at the transportation part of it, which eventually this twenty-year look, those are projects that are gonna enter the tip. So this is really good timing. These are things that aren't quite there yet, or they might be, but they're not funded or not well developed. So um that transportation uh comp plan is real important to the city. And um the water and wastewater comp plans were already uh done recently and adopted by council. Those will be incorporated as part of the overall comprehensive plan for the city. So it's good. So uh we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars and um S C J is already working on the rest of the comp plan. So it's a really good fit. Um, they're on our qualified pool list. And um so you'll see in there, there's a work order from S C J um to work on our comprehensive plan uh for transportation. They need, they're gonna be a little held up on it because they need to do a bunch of traffic counts. And uh they can't do it when school's out, unfortunately. So they're gonna be starting in the fall when school's back in again. Um, it's amazing the amount of traffic uh that, you know, the schools generate. Um, so you'll probably see the transportation comp plan coming out, maybe at the time of Christmas Town or something. That's about the right timing, you know, sometime next December or January sort of thing. Um, that's the end of my presentation.
Mr. Mayor, please replace resolution number one three three two, DAP zero five two four on June fourth, twenty twenty-four council meeting, action agenda for further consideration.
Thank you. Comments, question? Right, we have motion to set the place resolution number one three three two, DAP zero five three four for the June fourth, twenty twenty-four council meeting for further action. All in favor, say aye. Aye, closed. Our last business item is the J.
Yeah, uh, so council, uh, we have had a vacant city engineer position for over a year now. Um, this particular position is very difficult to hire right now. Um, civil engineers, um, there's just not a lot of them coming out of school. Um, a lot of the more senior people um are retiring at large rates. And um it's just one of those positions that it is very, very difficult uh to uh to fill. So we put out various applications um that it for city engineer, assistant public works director and um just didn't do well. Um, this is a very key position at the city um that a lot of things that they do is to manage the private development group. Um, that's for development review permitting and construction inspection for private developer projects. A lot of single-family home subdivisions, that sort of thing. Um, then they also work on capital projects. Um, that's, we have a lot of water projects and street projects and all sorts of things you guys are sort of hearing about on an ongoing basis. Um, so that's what that position does. Um, right now, I have people in from other divisions assisting me and I'm sitting there taking over some of these roles. Um, so as sort of a fill the gap, uh we put out an R F Q for senior engineering services and in February, we received uh two statements of qualifications. And uh then we uh chose civil air uh engineers uh as the most qualified uh company to perform the work. Um, they gave us a proposal after i- in the state of Washington, engineering and architectural services. You have to select the most qualified, then you negotiate scope and fee. And so uh we did that and you'll see the scope and fee attached here. Uh, we're planning on spending uh in the contract term about two hundred thousand dollars. The contract will go pretty much from uh May to May. It won't line up with our budget cycle, which is a calendar year, but we'll get that part figured out. But uh they're gonna come in, they're gonna run some of our capital projects for us and uh start rolling up their sleeves and being trained in our development review. Everybody's codes are a little different and it's gonna take a little while for these folks to be up and running. They're uh gonna be in the office two days a week and then available uh by phone or by Zoom meeting type of thing um at other times. So I think we'll see some uh great benefits uh by moving forward with this contract award. Thank you.
You want to have a public comment, Donna? No, there is, it's to me, we have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, who to replace resolution number one three three three, DAP zero five two four on the June fourth, twenty twenty-four council meeting. Action agenda for further consideration.
All right, common play.
Are we still recruiting, even if we pick up this contract, we're gonna continue to recruit?
Not currently, um, just because of the state of the job market. Um, that uh right now, um, these positions just aren't available. Um, I think we're gonna bring this company on, uh let it sit for a bit. Um, we still have uh in the uh uh public works fund, uh the vacant position. Uh, we're gonna evaluate uh that positional costs in the budget. Um, and um we might carry it forward in the twenty twenty-five budget. These are still conversations that we need to have. Um, I would like to get a full-time in-house person. I mean, obviously, we're buying getting a person, bringing them in-house and paying a consultant fee, right? That we can have somebody in-house for half the cost about, you know, by the time you pay their salary and their roll-ups for benefits and all that, it's probably half of what a consultant would cost. So um it's something me and the city manager need to look more into for the twenty twenty-five budget and the finance director and sort of evaluate the landscape. Um, you know, if you keep going out hoping you're gonna hire someone and you can't, uh, we're having issues with at similar positions at the city. Um, at a certain point, you gotta find something, especially with the workload that we have right now, that we have to find a fit. But that's a good question. And today, um, we're gonna keep the F T E and the budget will be in the twenty twenty-four budget. And uh we'll get back to you uh during the budget presentations to see if we're moving it forward for twenty twenty-five.
It's an incredible competitive job market in the civil engineer field. And last August, when I was at a conference, um, I talked to a couple of recruitment firms and they told me I didn't recruit for a city engineer because we couldn't recruit at the salary that we would pay. Um, because of the I five corridor, both private and public sector of the state of Washington, um, they're not able to fill all their needs uh as well. So um we're a little bit of a disadvantage here, being in a rural area and being able to compete with some of the more metropolitan areas that uh able to provide greater compensation. So at this point, that we felt this is the best path forward to be able to get the work done, provide the services to the community and uh promote some of the growth um that is is coming our way in a reasonable timeframe.
We're not unique. This is a problem in the entire city. I mean, I've had mayor. Everybody's talking about we can't get building inspector, we can't get engineer, we can't get police officers. It's it's, we're not unique. It's it's a it's a great idea. We got a lot of stuff in the hopper, I mean, um, in the next year, within, probably starting now, next year. I got lots of stuff going on, so uh definitely it's somebody on on staff. My question was, so it's two hundred thousand a year and is that for a certain amount of jobs? What if another one pops up, bigger one, uh, you know, a mall pop up? Is this person gonna be able to handle that or yeah, wow?
Yeah, so we'll assign workload as needed. Right now, we're estimating with the current workload, this is what it would be. But um I I mean, it's potential, the city manager and I, we're talking about two years from now. Um, we could have a lot of like single-family home permits and and um those subdivisions take uh a lot of time of uh inspectors out there looking at things, uh people reviewing plans in-house. And so um their their civil engineer prepares the documents. We have to have a civil engineer on this end um review the their documents and approve them. So right now, we're pretty satisfied with that. And so um if needed, we would have to maybe do a supplemental budget mid-year to add somebody. If it ended up that we really had a great If it ended up that we really had a great need. Uh so far, we're surviving. Um but we're not getting to a lot of our workload just because of that vacant position.
Right, we have a motion to second place resolution number one three 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 dash zero five two four. Right, we're now under action again.
Now, this is the mayor, the mayor and the council. Um tonight, I am on, I'm here on behalf of the Shell Arts Commission. Um we did uh called up artists through uh local artists, uh art galleries and organizations. Uh we had a deadline of Sir Forrest Mills on May third, and we had five artists submit art. And all of those artists are pre-training artists, which is great. Um the Shell Arts Commission met on May seventh to jury the artwork. And then um as we bring those to you tonight. And then they will be placed from June fourth through the end of August. Um the five artists, we have three that are doing photography work, uh Deborah, Shava Singer, Elizabeth Jacobson and Tom Ryder. Um both Deborah and Tom are bringing some black and white uh series with us this time. And then Heather Roseborough with acrylics and Joanne Dower with some more colored and. Um it's great to have another great round of art come through. And so I'm just looking for a final approval. Having taken questions.
Thank you, Jordan. Don, any type of comment? No.
No.
We have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, who to approve Sheldon Oxford's recommendations for placement in Civic Center Rotating Art Gallery?
Second. Right, how much question?
Yeah. Moments.
Right, we have a motion in second to approve the Sheldon Arts Commission's recommendations for placement. All up there say aye.
Aye.
Now we have a resolution for a grant company, Public Works Director Harris is back.
Yes, council. Um so uh your last meeting, you heard this, uh we were awarded a hundred and forty-three, six eighty-seven. From the National Estuary Program um to begin design on a backup or secondary disinfection system. Down the main wastewater treatment plant at Oakland Bay. Um I don't know if all of you have been on a tour. I know Council Sat hasn't yet. But um I give tours about every month. If you guys wanna come down and check it out, um get ahold of Danielle over there. Uh she lines me up with all the tours. It's good, I get out every month. But uh I'll stop by and I'll show you the current disinfection system, which is U V lights. Um the goal is to put in a backup to that. In case there was a failure in that system, we can just switch over to the secondary. System and uh keep uh the the proper permit uh requirements of the for the flows. Into Oakland Bay. Um so accepting the grant as part of the resolution tonight. And then also uh bringing uh parametrics onboard um for a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars. And forty-four cents um to uh design that for us. And so uh. Anyways, it's giving me the slack tide uh tank, it's a facility already on the site. And I think it's going to be a great thing for Oakland Bay and potentially for uh shellfish harvesting in the future. Just having that additional redundancy, um I think will go a long ways. And I've had no changes since my last presentation.
Thank you. Donna, answer for public comment?
No, there isn't.
We were reading the resolution for one three two eight dash zero three two four.
Resolution number one three two eight dash zero three two four. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve the grant agreement. With the Department of Health for backup disinfection treatment. Design at the wastewater treatment plant and to proceed with the work order for design of the project by parametrics engineers.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to adopt number uh. Resolution number one three two eight dash zero three two four.
So this is triple redundancy now that we have, because we remember in my my time here, we've done dual U V lights. For for that purpose. Now we have a third option to protect the waters. And yet award, what, multiple years now for our efforts in that. And some, I believe, some phase opened up for for hundreds of correct.
Recently, there's some conditionally approved um areas across um from the treatment plant over the Short Crest area, correct?
And that was efforts that we did at the plant. We put on the slack tide tank and automated valve there. That we can shut the uh flows to the plant, fill up the slack tide tank and then pump. The water that was out of spec back through the plant again. And so when the state saw that, they came out and approved the project. Um that uh processes went through, Squawks and Tribe was uh talking to them. And um that uh that enabled uh the state to release and open up some more shellfish areas, just that one project. I don't know if the backup disinfection is also gonna be compelling for them. Um but we're gonna get it designed and then we're gonna seek opportunities. It's about a million dollars to put that in uh for construction funding.
Yeah, over the years that I've been here, we keep adding redundancy to protect the waters. Like the body generators, dual double generators, W V lights. Thank you.
Welcome.
Always welcome to bring in quality, bring up the quality and bring in the quantity of more water to.
And thank the wastewater plant staff. Uh they do a lot out there every day behind the scenes on that campus. You know, keeping this quality water, you know, that comes in and is treated and goes out, it stays within permit every day. And uh whether it's equipment, maintenance and repair, the U V system, they went in and um. Put new circuit boards and new light bulbs and that sort of thing, self-performed all that work. What's that?
Scan it.
Data system was upgraded too, so our callouts are better. And the number of items that we can get notifications on is increased also. Um so they are running a really tight ship down there at the plant. So uh anytime anybody wants to go for a tour. Call Danielle there and I'll take you around and show you some of the latest things going on.
And our ultimate goal is is not to aid any account of the bank. Kind of jetty wells or spray fields somewhere. That's probably. About twenty years away.
Yeah.
Yeah, ambitious.
Yep. Recharge aquifers with the water, uh dump with the water out in the bay.
Alright. Well, we have a motion in second to adopt resolution number one three two eight. Dash zero three two four presented. All up there say aye. Jay, you're up.
I've got a busy night tonight. So so at the other treatment plant, the satellite plant. Um and uh we are working on uh the reclaim water tank up there. And part of that is uh we have to uh go through C P A um with the State Environmental Policy Act. And um we were talking to our planning division, we were showing uh the wetland delineation word. And the buffer associated with the wetland, there's an off-site wetland. Um to our planning folks and uh that delineation was quite old. It was like from two thousand seven. And um anyways, they asked if we can get an updated delineation down to the wetland. So um. This scope of work um increases uh. Uh the or allows a consultant to perform that within his scope of work. Um the delineation uh is very similar and uh found out that uh. The quality of the wetland wasn't as high as people in in oh seven, oh five anticipated or looked at. And the actual buffer decreased. And so it was good, it's uh usually you don't see that. Where um you have a wetland, the buffer was two fifty, it went down to about one fifty. So it actually sort of moved it off of our project site. So there was some good outcomes there. That area is all wooded. Nothing's gonna be built in there uh for forever. Um these buffers are pretty much protected. So uh it it's a good thing that this happened probably. And uh future phases of the wetland or of the expansion of the membrane treatment plant. Um will be utilizing the same delineation for uh headworks and future plant expansion. Uh the headworks is coming up soon. Um you guys will see that at the next meeting. Um so that we're gonna be using the same delineation uh multiple times.
Right, thank you, Jake.
You're welcome.
Donna, I'm gonna read the resolution number one three three one dash zero four two four.
Resolution number one three three one dash zero four two four. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington. Authorizing city manager to approve supplemental agreement number three. To professional services agreement with Green Osborn Incorporated titled Satellite Wastewater Treatment Plant. Team project.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, who to adopt resolution number one three three one dash zero four two four, presented.
Correct, how much your question? Hey, we have a motion in second to adopt resolution number one three three one dash zero four two four presented. All up there say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mark Ziegler, city manager, impression about protocol manual. Goals.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Um. Once again, bringing to you tonight, um council strategic goals of twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five. Uh version as well as the council protocol manual. I want to bring to your attention. Uh page forty-two and forty-three. I did make two changes since the last briefing. Uh it's really been beneficial um having uh the opportunity to seat a new council member. In the middle of this protocol manual update because uh we could revise some of the process. And clarify what works and what's best practice for the council. So again, on page forty-two, under voting, uh. Item F, uh the previous language said the city clerk records the votes in the meeting minutes. The proposed change, the city clerk shall proceed with a roll call vote and record the votes in the meeting minutes, just clarifies that. Vote is being taken by the city clerk. And then item G, uh the previous language wa- language was the selection of a candidate to fill the vacancy is made by a majority vote. Of the remaining six members of the council. Excuse me, that remains. I add the language, or elections will continue until a nominee receives a majority vote of the remaining council members. Again, it just clarifies that. We don't have that majority vote, it'll start over again. So uh two changes since the briefing. On the seventh. And I'm open to any questions the council may have.
Donna, anyone want to make a comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
We were reading resolution number one three three four dash zero five two four.
Resolution number one three three four dash zero five two four. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, updating the city council protocol manual and policy number one hundred dash ten. Council agenda briefing slash reports.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, who to adopt resolution number one three three four dash zero five two four as presented.
Second.
Alright, how much your questions? We have a motion in second to adopt resolution number one three three four dash zero five two four presented. All up there say aye.
Aye.
Alright, one more from Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. Bringing forward tonight, the environmental covenant for the C Street landfill that has been provided by the Department of Ecology. This covenant outlines the future use of the landfill portion of the parcel. What's commonly referred to as C Street landfill, um not the outside areas of that of that parcel. Which um were impacted by the landfill. Again, it's about six areas, six acres, sorry, of of landfill. That is uh prohibited from certain uses in the future. And we um have to continue monitoring groundwater in that area. And then the areas outside of that landfill could be used for um for future uses as the city deems necessary.
Thank you. I'm gonna read the resolution for one three three. Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss a comment?
No, Mr. Mayor, there isn't. Yes. Resolution number one three three zero dash zero four two four. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, accepting the Washington State Department of Ecology's environmental covenant for the C Street landfill.
Thank you, Donna. You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, who to approve resolution number one three three zero dash zero four two four as presented.
Right, how much your questions? Yeah, I just wanna thank staff for catching that they were going to walk off the whole entire parcel, not just the six acres and. If that was a good catch, uh make sure that we're able to use the other, how many, nine acres?
Yeah, yeah.
Eight or nine acres, or something, someday.
Absolutely.
That's a good job of that. Alright, any other comments or questions? We have a motion in second to the resolution number one three three zero F zero four two four presented. All up there say aye.
Aye.
Alright, we are now out of city manager report. Mark, we have a report for.
A few things, I, you know, I wanna continue the theme from the presentation tonight. I recognize the volunteerism in our community. I think it's um it's nights like this and we see uh the presentations that remind us of the dedicated. Uh citizenry that we have here that contribute to our town. Um being involved in a service club for many, many years. Um it's been great to see um that average age decrease a little bit at some of these events, but we still need more. Um certainly with the work that's been put in on Tully over the last week plus. Um that doesn't include the planning process um put in primarily by by Zach Hanson. Who's, you know, in his low twenties and took this this effort on. And then we saw um probably the average age of volunteers out there. The Dickerson family uh dropped that way down. Um. And the efforts they put into that, but they're really, really being led by their grandfather, who Dwayne Wilson has been a stalwart volunteer in our community. For many, many years. And it's great to see that he's instilling that into his grandchildren here for hopefully generations to come. I I joked with some of those kids that they get to do this for multiple times in their lifetime, you know, maybe some of some of us that were out there, maybe. Maybe the last time we get to paint it, they get to paint it many, many times in their lifetime. So um joke to them a little bit. I don't know if they saw that. Yeah. Humor in that. Um Forest Festival's right around the corner again, volunteer run event. Um brings a lot of uh history to our community. It's the eightieth um iteration of a forest festival here in town. Lot of great events. You see a carnival already being set up uh down off First Street. Um the Shelton Rotary and their involvement with Huff and Puff Trail. It's been a successful, highly successful effort with them. Taking some ownership, providing uh the volunteer um work that they've done up there and then taking on the memorial at the same time. Um the memorial is something that Abe Gardner was involved with with his Eagle Scout project. Um placed on city property with no real plan to, you know, to manage it and and um dedicate um. The necessary effort to that after years um of it of it being there and being in place. So um. City has to do a better job. We have to do a better job engaging our community in that, much like Tully, um the clock tower, the log monument. Uh amenities like that that are that are in place, that are community assets and make sure that um people are aware that. There's opportunities there to become involved. Um I wanna mention um Post Office Park as well. Um as council knows, um we've been communicated to by the U S Postal Service of their intent to. Um remove the park, add parking uh there. Uh their intent is July one. Uh we've been in contact with our um federal delegation expressing um the city's concern. Uh in maintaining that green space and the Christmas tree that's in place. But also the process and our process and what we thought was a good faith effort to negotiate a property swap with. The postal service to maintain that and then then pulling that at the last minute on us after we um spent just over thirty thousand dollars on that effort. So yeah, exactly. We're still working on on that uh effort with the postal service, but. Um I'm happy to see that there's there's some ground swell in the community and an effort this Friday to educate more of our community. Uh when the mayor and I were down there a couple of weeks ago, meeting with Senator Murray's rep, um somebody just drove up and. You know, asked us to save the park and save the trees. So uh there's there's community interest out there and certainly. I need to preserve some of these traditions that are so near and dear in in this in this community that we live. And I think that uh that covers my uh. Oh, I guess the last thing, uh is showing the sort of preservation board again, more volunteers dedicating their time preserving history in our community. And we saw that presentation tonight. I just wanted to recognize those individuals for stepping up because um without, you know, without the boards to make those decisions. And run these uh run these programs and these efforts. Um you know, those those things go away. They they slowly die, so.
There was a private effort um Friday, a part to uh. about it.
Four six.
Four six.
Yeah. I think gain more information. Um, the individuals have been in contact with me, obviously, um, the intent is just to provide information. Um, it's not going to be a, um, it's not going to be a protest that blocked the street or does anything like that. And then provide more information, provide an opportunity for kids to color some signs and make some signs, hand out some information, some letters and contact information uh, to the U S Postal Service, uh, Board of Directors, as well as our federal delegation.
Questions, Mark? All right. At this time, members of the public are invited to make public comment on any city related topic.
The first speaker is Susan Kurchop. Those of you know, I don't do that. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Lithgow, council members and community members here tonight. My name is Susan Kurchop and I am the founder and executive director of the Youth Connection with lived homelessness experience three times in my life. So I have a good understanding of what homeless people go through. We currently have um, two shelters or two drop in centers, one in shelter, one in welfare. We operate six offsite shelter housing programs where we house sixteen young people. I'm here tonight, though, as a representative of our nonprofit homeless response system that is working together to create a change. Youth Connection is hosting a provider party with a purpose in hopes to change how outreach is conducted in our community and create a system which works together to support the whole person and find a solution for Mason County's homeless problem. In twenty twenty four, the Youth Connection has signed up one hundred and ten literally homeless young people in Mason County. This is a twenty five percent increase from last year. This number is increasing as the cost of living has increased and causing individuals to lose their ability to support themselves with without support. The Youth Connection is fortunate as we work hard to prevent our clients from becoming chronically homeless, but we know that that's still a problem. Our clients say that the Youth Connection is the only support that they can trust. The Youth Connection hears me when no one else does. The reality is the Youth Connection cannot reach them in time. Studies from the National Alliance to End Homelessness has shown the cost to our taxpayers increases daily the longer we are prevented from housing the person into permanent supportive housing like our own veteran village does. Hospitalization and medical treatment costs two thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars more per hospitalization due to homelessness and increased time spent in the person with the person in them. Homelessness both causes and results from serious health care issues, including addiction, psychological disorders and posts of other ailments requiring long term consistent care. Homelessness often detracts from regular medical attention, access to treatment and recuperation. The inability to do this has increased by eight thousand to fourteen thousand dollars per homeless person. Emergency shelters are a necessary thing, but they are not permanent housing. We have to make a choice. The cost of emergency shelters is the same cost of BUDS emergency shelters per person. It actually increases by eight thousand dollars per person when you go from emergency shelter to subsidy. I'm running out of time, so I don't want to run out too much. It's just proving that and I have studies that I can sell from Seattle and I have a study in a rural area that when you put permanent supportive housing into place, it decreases by fifty seven percent reduction in mental health services over a six month period.
Thank you.
Come to my provider party though. I have secrets, we can do it.
Thank you, Mike. Well, Mason County member, thank you, bro. Allow me to be here. Typically, I'll shoot from the head. I also rode and mellowed out so I can make sure that I stayed on track. Um, we stand at a critical juncture, juncture where the fabric of society is spraying into edges and the principles of leadership seem to have been lost in the wind. Today, I bring your attention to dire consequences of hypocrisy in leadership, where those in power prioritize their own agendas over the welfare of their community. Look around you. In our very midst, homelessness homelessness has become a haunting specter, specter of Catholic and shadow over the promise of prosperity. And every corner of our small town, there can be seen the negative impact on businesses and community members. Yet, what do we see or what do we see from the those entrusted with the responsibility to lead and protect us? We see indifference, we see neglect, and in some cases, we see contempt. Imagine being sworn out by the very mayor who pledged to serve and represent every citizen of this town. Such insolence is not only an affront to decency, but declaring symptom of hypocrisy at its worst. Leadership is not a title to be worn as a badge of honor. It's a sacred duty, a solemn pact between the governed and those who govern and to champion the cause of justice for all. We cannot allow hypocrisy to prevail any longer. We must demand accountability from our leaders. We must insist on and on empathy in governance and we must reclaim the spirit of service that's the true essence of leadership. The time for change is now and the power to effect that change lies within each and every one of us. I won't go into the words that were used at the banking of a gavel. Uh, but I will mention that there's a gentleman, if you all remember about six months ago by the name of Thomas Wolfe. He came in here and used the exact same words and he was chastised and ridiculed and told that he can't speak like that. But apparently that's before the gavel hit the table. So we're gonna sit here for the other forty eight, fifty seconds that I have left in silence and we're just gonna reflect on how that went down. And people that don't see it, they were here, they seen it. Thanks, Eric.
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor.
We have Colleen Carmichael on Zoom.
Good evening, Mayor Nesko, Deputy and fellow council members. I'm Colleen Carmichael, the Executive Director of Quixote Communities. I'd like to share one of our veterans' success stories. This one is from the Ordings Veterans Village. Harry served our nation proudly in the Army. When he came back from his time, he had financial struggles, a deep feeling of isolation and untreated PTSD. Harry felt like he could not find a way out. He told us, I was living in my car. It was rough. I had to keep looking over my shoulder and I never knew when the next attack was coming. Harry's not alone. According to the Journal of Community Health, veterans who've experienced homelessness are twice as likely as other homeless to report lifetime suicide attempts. They are also eleven times more likely than other housed veterans to attempt suicide. Veterans with housing instability in the past year are six times as likely as those who were housed to report suicidal ideation. Our programs offer housing with supportive services. In December of twenty twenty three, we surveyed our residents to find out what their past history was before entering our programs. Our research found that sixty two percent of them reported struggling with behavioral health challenges. Fifty seven percent reported struggling with a substance use disorder and thirty six percent reported having been a survivor of domestic violence. Harry was one of those people. In twenty twenty one, he found his way to the soldier's home in Ordine and started his path to wellness when he was referred to the Ordine Veterans Village. Harry said, I lived in the village for two years. I have a secure place. I can come and make food and do what I need to do. It's a nice, comfortable place and I get along well with everyone. We know the many challenges our homeless veterans face. According to a research paper published by the Community Mental Health Journal, it is important to recognize that homeless veterans face challenges in accessing care, including issues with transportation, the availability of healthcare services, storing and refilling prescriptions, scheduling and keeping appointments, stigma, trust, isolation and unmet needs. Harry was someone who desperately needed housing with wraparound services. With the support of our programs, he's become one of the most beloved members of our village. He's quick to offer a smile and is proud of living where he's living. He had this to say, when we all work together as a community, we can overcome the problems of the world. Please help the homeless service providers share more success stories like Harry by supporting our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Donna?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. We have Tamara E. Walson.
Good evening, Camara E. Walson. I'm with Quixote Communities, the Shelton Veterans Village, Ordin Veterans Village in the original, original Olympia. And I live outside of the city limits. And I wanted to come up and touch on the community spirit that's been exemplified and shared throughout today and all of the things that have been demonstrated. And also share that through that community spirit, part of that is the community garden up at the Shelton Veterans Village, which looks like a frickin nursery and it's so darn cool. So you'd have to go look at the work that the city made possible, the split rotary, the Mason Conservation District with the Yeoman's Work and working on the grass and pulling all that together, representing the youth and representatives from Youth Connections alongside volunteers and residents also coming up and working there. And so that community spirit, that sense of projecting positivity versus projecting negativity. And the teamwork and the collaboration that we do as a homeless task force together. And I wanted to finish what Susan wasn't able to finish in the spirit of that teamwork. As a community, which starts here with you and with me, with each one of us. You, the city council and us, we must change how we look at homelessness. It is not going away. We are all one crisis, one paycheck, one situation away from being homeless, from sleeping in our cars if we're so lucky to have one. Please plan to attend the provider party with a purpose on June thirteenth and find out different ways that we can collaborate. We can connect with Susan to get more details and continue to reach out and work together because that's how that's how we are gonna make this different and being solution focused. As we take this data, we recognize that what we've been doing hasn't been working, sweeps and different things. So let's look at part of the comprehensive plan, part of the different things that we have as total new blocks to really look at how we can get that return on investment. That return on investment is a healthier community, better public health all the way around for everyone. A more vibrant space. People interacting together and really sharing and enjoying and exemplifying that spirit of community that you heard. Thank you. Thank.
Else, Donna?
No one else, Mr. Mayor.
Don't have any new items for discussion? I think it's worth one more mention, uh, the training, but the Hanson, the Wilson, the Durstons and Zach, especially Zach Hansen, but he had a vision for that train and he didn't mature from that. But, you know, I said earlier, we painted and painted again because it wasn't good enough. And uh, and I really appreciate the hard work that they did. And again, those kids are just thank you again. Yes, our next meeting is Tuesday, June fourth at six P M. We also have a session in June, or May twenty eighth at six P M. These meetings in June, about seven forty four.